Hello, hello, what's going on seven five seven? It's your girl, Arlanda Britt. You can find me on social networks at Arlanda Britt. And I am a real estate agent, model, entrepreneur, and fashion show coordinator.
And wife.
And wife, of course.
That's right.
And today, we are here to discuss and talk about and get to know Michael J. Muhammad. He is a candidate for the Norfolk Ward Seven. And we definitely want to shed light and bring awareness on the issues and bring a change to Norfolk. So it is my pleasure to introduce Michael J. Muhammad.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. I'm Michael J. Muhammad, as she said, and I've been serving community now for all of my life. And I enjoy service, particularly to the downtrodden. And so this Ward Seven seat service is a great opportunity to not only serve the people, but serve the people in a way that can be long lasting and effective.
Yes, and that's what we need. I was born in Norfolk. I lived in Norfolk for about seven years. So I enjoyed Norfolk. Actually, that was probably one of my favorite cities growing up. Most of my life was in Chesapeake. But like I said, growing up, it was, it was an exciting time. It was always something to do. And of course, now times are changing and we see it right before our eyes. So I'm curious of what are some of the issues that Norfolk faces today that you want to shed some light on?
Very good. There's several issues, of course, all of the issues are my issues, whatever the issues of the people. There are 120,000 residents in Ward Seven, 244,000 in the city of Norfolk. And with the central focus on what accumulates to more than half of Norfolk, larger than the city of Portsmouth in its population and voter population or registered voters. And so with that being the case, it's literally a city within a city. The unfortunate reality is it's degraded in services because Norfolk is a city in crisis. As you were born here, I was born here. I love this city as you love this city. Many love the city, they travel here, they, they live here, they work here, they play here. The unfortunate reality is that in this modern context, the city and the many crises of the city continue because there is a tone deafness amongst the current leadership to the people. And so when you have a disconnect from the people and the leadership, then the services are disconnected. And so because the people are so depraved in services, looking at the gun violence, which is a very serious issue that we want to focus on and bring programmatic strategy, counselors, developers, and those in the business sector that can help to give opportunity so that you can at least get a word in edgewise with those who are going through those degraded circumstances. Because when you're poor or when you're struggling, that's your focus. And so we want to begin to build wraparound services utilizing municipal government resources. Because when people speak in terms of city, too often, they exclude the real city, which is the people. They're thinking about bricks, mortar, and projects. But I believe first and foremost in human infrastructure development. And so as we work on the gun violence issue, as we work on human infrastructure development, as we work on bringing equality and equity, not just equality, but also equity to the business sector. The thriving economy of this city should be beneficial to the majority population. And so because the largest population of people who live, work, play, and spend in this city look like us and live in Ward Seven, we should be able to enjoy the 1.56 billion dollar annual budget and the multi-billion dollar developments that are forthcoming. And another issue that is very paramount to my campaign is flooding. Working to mitigate what we know is the imminent flooding we see in New Orleans. We see that Norfolk has been designated for many years as the only city in America that resembles New Orleans in terms of the pocket that it sits down in. So we're two hours off 95 in each direction and we sit down in a bowl. And as that bowl fills with water, damage, damage, damage. So we have to work towards serious flood mitigation, but also we have to work through, work for disaster preparedness and to lead the people through what is bound to be imminent. And so we have to have people who are serious about community and who are engaged with community. And that's what gives me the platform to run for Norfolk's Ward Seven.
Right. And you, you said something that was interesting, that the, the city is the people.
That's right.
And we, we are the people, the city is the people. Essentially, under any type of democracy, anything, it's the people, right?
The people.
So, and then, and also with Norfolk, how much money does Norfolk bring in?
Norfolk's annual budget or its current budget is 1.56 billion, but it'll increase based on what comes in from federal dollars and other expenditures. It'll increase and over the years, and very soon it'll be 2 billion, but we're not sharing in it.
So that is a huge budget.
Yes.
Especially for one city, and especially for cities that, um, they're more burials than businesses.
Yes.
Also, I believe I seen, a couple of years ago, I seen some article that Norfolk was the most welcoming city in the seven five seven. And I said, where?
Where they welcome you at?
Where? I mean, I do know that maybe downtown Norfolk.
Well, you know, the jail is.
Attractions are.
The jail is always overfull, so that may be the welcome.
I, yeah.
That our community is used to.
Yeah.
Interesting. What, what, when you do with.
The top 10 in the country, I believe.
Yeah, it was weird to see that as well. Not that Norfolk could not be that, but for us as an inclusionary community, it's not that.
The city and the people.
So, so burials outpace businesses opening in our community. And because burials outpace businesses opening, then our community can't be seen as thriving. It is seen as decaying. So now we have an intrusion of outsiders who are coming in from everywhere into the political spectrum, into the business spectrum, and all seeing Norfolk as a carcass that they can eat from. So we have those in the, uh, this particular race, many of them, who are not from Norfolk. And that does not become a requiring factor to participate. But the continuity of information that is necessary to take the people into the next 50 to 100 years of Norfolk's landscape is important, particularly as we talk about flooding and the budget and how most of the money comes in as a result of Ward Seven, but goes out to the other wards, primarily Ward Six. And we break it down into two wards because Ward Seven is more than half of the city and Ward Six is the balance. And so the money in Ward Six goes to the white west side, the wealthy. And so on the east side and the south side of Norfolk, you see the roads are bad. You see that the lights are out longer when storms come, the flooding is worse in certain parts. So as they work to mitigate flooding in those areas, preparing the land as a Highland area, their push is to move the wealthy white onto the land of the east and the south side, thus pushing black out. That's why in the military highway corridor, it is very important that we look at these projects that they're presenting and not get wrapped up in celebrity. So they mention the names of these celebrities, but you don't look at the conglomerates that are behind them. And you don't understand that they're coming in with an idea that is totally adverse to what was and what you had a vision for it to be. And so now your city is no longer your city. It is now some metropolis that you don't understand, don't feel comfortable in, and now you're pushed out of. So I'm running as an inside man to give a voice to the people from the inside, the businesses at Military Circle, that the, that the administration from the city won't even go and see in person. Those people have built what they call a black Wall Street network of businesses there. But they're being interrupted with no real future plans laid before them or without the benefit of someone coming and talking to them in person. They're being pushed to virtual conversation while yet they gather for sport, athletic, and play. But our people and their businesses aren't important. So I'm running to give a voice to the voiceless, to those business leaders. And particularly as I walked through Military Circle and saw so many black women who had businesses, minority, double minority, these are women who have children, who are building family, who are seeking independence so that they're never put in a position where they're left out. That's what we're looking to build. We want to take the economic opportunities of Ward Seven and engage with the minority communities. And particularly the SWAM available, um, um, small business and women owned businesses. We want to focus on getting that wealth pool generating because generational wealth starts with having people who are engaged in the business sector. And with generational wealth comes a change in the educational system. With a change in the educational system comes a change in the behavior and information flow of the people. Thus, a decrease in violence, crime, and all of that outflow. And we can begin to build and design and develop world-class communities that are safe and vibrant. And that's why I'm running for Norfolk's Ward Seven.
Yes. And I, you know, I truly, truly believe in you because, one, I know you personally. And even in our personal endeavors, you make change, you do the things that you say you were gonna do, and you influence others to kind of adapt to that same exact behavior. So for one reason, that's why I truly believe in you. And just on other endeavors, like you were saying, the business and the black businesses and black women in Military Circle Mall, I grew up in Military Circle Mall. That was the mall.
All of it.
Of course, I love MacArthur, we love Green Rod, we love Lynn Haven.
Military.
But the only mall that I went to growing up was Military.
We got our shoes from?
Everything.
Jewelry.
I mean, and the businesses that are in there now, they are contributing to the business flow, the audience, everybody who comes in and out of Military Circle Mall.
The 1.56 billion they are contributing to as well.
1.56 billion. They are now there specifically for the people that are in the stores now. Um, the traffic isn't as free as it used to be. Now it's specific customers that are going there to see these, um, business owners. So I think that is important because that was such a main attraction. And now it is a more direct attraction. So yes, those people matter because we're going there for those people now and these business owners. So that is definitely something that's important to me.
The influence of being able to control and create traffic in this environment where online shopping and coronavirus and all that is affiliated is so prevalent. You have to have a tremendous respect for those businesses. When you go there, the finery of their garments and the layout of their businesses and designs or studios, as I've visited them and, and patronized those businesses, you would be blown away to know that these people worked all by themselves without bank loans or anything to stock and staff these businesses. And now they're under the impending threat and uncertainty of where do they go from here?
Yeah.
And that's unfair. And that's why I'm running because the people, a better informed citizenry will do better about it in the city. But the people being uninformed gives way to something other than democracy. It's more like a dictatorship, see? And people began to operate in that vein and use municipal government and structure against the citizens as opposed to for the citizens. So when you see the citizens' businesses being intruded upon as opposed to education being provided, I propose that instead of shutting businesses down, you engage them, you educate them, and then you prepare them for success because the flow of currency from their business has a continuous flow into the treasury of the city of Norfolk. That's why I said they contribute to that 1.56 billion. It's our money and we should expend it in community. Norfolk is 1.2 billion in debt based on giving away money to wealthy white developers to build and grow rich. But yet, the citizens are burdened with the payback. You may never stay in the main hotel, but you're responsible for the more than 100 million that the city Norfolk contributed to the building of that hotel that is now attached to our public library. So there's a lot that goes into those relationships with municipal government. That 1.2 billion dollar debt is being paid at a 74 million dollar a year interest-only debt service. That means that we're spending over the last five years nearly 400 million dollars when we built five schools for 120 million. And that means we're spending more in debt service than we are in actual service, in infrastructure service, in human infrastructure service. We're paying out but not bringing in that which we're expending because we've given away the bank. And I'm here to stop the bank robbers, to stop the pillagers, to stop this transaction of illegality that is posed as government and push it back to the people so that we can have freedom, justice, and equality.
Yes.
That's why I'm running for Norfolk's Ward Seven.
We need you, we need you.
Thank you.
We need you because you understand.
And I need you all.
Yes.
From September 17th to November 2nd, to stay engaged, to stay focused, don't let nobody shake you. Am I perfect? No. Do I try to be? No. Do I want to be? No. Because that would make me him, and I don't want to be him because the responsibility that he has is so great. I'm talking about the one who is perfect. So therefore, I'm comfortable being a flawed, frail human being, seeking forgiveness. But guess what? It don't interfere with my service. I give from my heart what God gives me, and I don't stop until we get it done.
We're gonna get it done.
Yeah.
We got work to do.
We got work to do.
Yeah, so we definitely want you all to stay engaged because early voting starts September 17th. So you guys need to get registered to vote. If you live in the city of Norfolk.
Yes.
Please make sure that you're registered to vote because you can start voting as early as, what, next week?
Yes, September 17th. And you can go, uh, right, they're tweaking the website now, but you can go to michaeljmuhamad.com, M-I-C-H-A-E-L-J-M-U-H-A-M-M-A-D.com. And you'll be able to find out where your precincts are. You'll be able to find out about early vote and the process as well as about November 2nd, where, uh, we will be for our victorious celebration.
Yes.
Yes. Because we not only have work to do, but we're gonna work for this. We're not taking anything or anybody for granted, but the commitment of our heart and the desire of our heart to serve is gonna deliver us the victory.
Yes, yes, so please make sure that you register to vote. Um, so you will have until, up until the day that you are able to vote, which is November 2nd.
Yeah.
So we definitely want somebody that's for us, right? That understands the system, that understands what needs to be done in order to bring that change.
Yes.
And one, the education. We need the money that we are spending on debt in the education. Because the Ward Seven, like Muhammad said, is one in, almost in a bowl, like it's sinking. And those that are outside of that bowl, they're, you know, they're doing okay. So we want everybody to rise up out that bowl on a flat surface.
Yes.
And then we can all elevate. And I think that's extremely important. The candidates that we have, um, or the, well, let me say the candidate that's in office now, um, eventually that seat is gonna be given up. And we have to put somebody in place that, one, is from Norfolk.
Mm-hmm.
Because they, he knows how it works. He knows how the city can contribute or how he can contribute to the city. He knows the things in and out. So we want somebody there that knows.
Thank you.
Not that the other candidates that are not from Norfolk, not that they aren't able to contribute, but if they didn't live here, they have a secondhand opinion and they have secondhand knowledge of the issues on Norfolk. So that's why we need Michael J. Muhammad in that seat to bring change and he's knowledgeable, right? Would you go to a neurologist and you need a surgery on your arm? No, they probably can perform that surgery, yes. But you want the proper surgery, you want the proper things that need to be done. And thus far, Michael J. Muhammad is the only candidate. And my eyes, taking out my personal relationship, he brings change in his personal life.
Thank you.
Why wouldn't he be able to bring change to his business endeavors?
Thank you.
When those closest to him are changing and developing. So that is why I support you. That's why I believe in you.
If I may, you said something, I love the analogy of the bowl. The reality of the bowl is, when it comes to the flooding, which is a very, very, very close subject to my heart because I know that it's imminent. All of the scientists, all that, but that flooding is not in comparison to what the, the impending flood is. And the reality of that is, out of all of the candidates, no matter where they've gone, none have studied in foreign territory disaster preparedness. I was privileged to be a part of one of the last delegations hosted by El Comandante, El Jefe Fidel Castro Ruiz of Cuba, the former and now deceased leader of Cuba, to study disaster preparedness post Hurricane Katrina because we wanted to know how did this island nation get hit directly with a category three hurricane, the eye of the hurricane, and sustained minimal life loss? But New Orleans was hit with a category two non-direct hit and lost 1,200 or more lives. So we went and studied. I lived there and studied there and brought back an informational system on how to move people in the case of disaster preparedness. And the most interesting piece of it, it was all based on using those who are seen as derelict in community. So the young people who are normally seen as problematic are engaged, trained as social workers and released into community to bring back the information that is necessary to move people effectively and effectually during disaster. I want to bring that to Norfolk because we face that problem. We face that in a very serious way. And that type of guidance and leadership is what the people need. Thank you.
Definitely. That's definitely what we need. I know when I'm driving through Norfolk, um, I'm like, ooh, what am I doing? What is this? Ain't we all paying taxes?
Man, li- listen, listen.
Cause Virginia Beach, they done fixed all the roads out there on the beach.
VDOT, VDOT, which is the, uh, Virginia Department of Transportation.
Yeah.
Gives a, um, certain amount of money to every municipality based on its curves. So it's a per square inch curvature, um, amount that is given back for maintenance of the roads. Norfolk receives about 24.5 million. But according to the most recent budget, 11.16 million of that was spent elsewhere. And that's to cover the shortfall of the debt service. So therefore, our roads are in disrepair because we don't have money. I was sitting in our headquarters the other day and an ambulance come zooming down the street, the number seven ambulance, we have it on video, and it gets to the light and dies. They were on their way to an emergency call. And the, 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 these, the, uh, emergency workers, I took them ice water and they sat there over an hour before anyone came. They sent another vehicle to the call. And I'm saying that to say that the services to the citizens, while we keep our numbers looking good, the services to the citizens have been cut. People are waiting on, on hold for 911 and other services. We're over, we're nearly 200 police positions deficient. See, we're, we're, we're short. So at night, 7-11s and Wawa's and other businesses are closing early and many don't realize this. They're closing early because there are not enough police to patrol. And so therefore, we're faced with a crisis that requires a crisis manager. And I am that one. I have led more families in this community through crisis, whether it was police-involved shooting, whether it was a tragic death unbeknownst, whether it was the intrusion of the courts on their family, whatever the crisis, I have been there and led the people through for over half my life. And so therefore, Norfolk needs a crisis manager and I am he. Thank you.
Definitely, definitely. And, um, God rest her soul, we all remember the tragic, tragic, uh, loss of Ashanti Billy.
Yes.
Um, and you were able to get the Ashanti Alert out, the, um, the originator of the Ashanti Alert. And we want to keep that going. Yes, we, she's no longer here with us, but we want to keep the influence of why the Ashanti Billy Alert was created. We want to keep that alive in regards to missing persons from ages, what, 18 to 64?
That's correct. What happens is, um, I met a wonderful family and, and I hate the circumstances under which I met them. Mr. Mel Tony Billy and Ms. Brandy Billy, the wonderful, wonderful parents of a beautiful 19-year-old girl at that time, Ashanti Billy. She came to Norfolk, uh, Virginia Beach actually, to, uh, the Art Institute of Virginia to go to school from Maryland. She lived at, uh, she lived in, in Maryland at the MGM Grand in that area, Harbor Heights, uh, of the harbor. And her family loaned her to this area. She got a job in Norfolk at the naval base. And one morning, she went in to open her business, the business, the blimpies that she was employed, because they were preparing to open for business and they had to have inspection. So being a good steward and a great worker, she was there early. And unfortunately, a subhuman who preyed on her and watched her and harassed her for several weeks hid in the darkness. And when she approached her business, he snatched her and he took her to Charlotte, North Carolina, where he did things that are unspeakable. And he left her in a church field dead. We spent 12 days searching high and low, serving that family, hoping to find Ashanti alive. And it was the most horrific experience when we got the call 12 days after she was missing. Uh, and I was with her mother when the FBI, I was the only one with her mother, when the FBI came and gave her that horrid news. I wouldn't wish that anyone ever see a parent in that condition or go through that, even on my worst enemy, I wouldn't. And so we worked with fever and, and, and with determination to produce a law that would make law enforcement go and look for persons 18 to 64 that were missing, which were primarily black women in America, not just Virginia, in America. And so through various legislators on the Democrat and Republican side, we navigated Virginia and then into the United States Congress, both houses, and to the desk of President Donald J. Trump on December 31st, 2018, at 6:00 PM during a government shutdown, he signed the Ashanti Law into act. We now are faced with funding. So Senator Mark Warner of Virginia, champion for, for Virginia, former governor of Virginia, one of the best politicians in America, I mean, the most, one of the most sincere, who does what he says he's gonna do, uh, is working and championing the, um, Ashanti Alert in the Appropriations Committee of the US Senate in the next month to fund this initiative, which would put the Ashanti Alert to your phones. So that when, when, when people go missing 18 to 64, you don't have to wait three and four days. If it's a critical missing person under certain elements, then they'll put an alert out just like they would for an amber alert or a silver alert. And we created that out of the death of Ashanti to serve many, many lives going forward. So this Saturday, not this Saturday, next Saturday, September 18th, we're gonna come together for a candlelight vigil on the fourth anniversary of her passing. And we're gonna honor Ashanti with prayer and a push towards the Appropriations Committee to get this thing fully funded.
Perfect.
Yes, ma'am.
Awesome, yeah, so, um, so I can appreciate that. I'm between the ages of 18 and 64. And there are times where I travel alone, um, as, whether it's entrepreneur, whether it's my modeling jobs, I often travel alone and I definitely will want to feel safe, for one, in the city of Norfolk, which is, most of my business endeavors are in Norfolk. Um, so I definitely want to feel safe. And if, God forbid, anything were to happen, yeah, I would want everyone to know as soon as possible because we all know that if you are unable to find a missing person within the first 48 hours.
That's right.
Your chances of finding them alive decreases.
Decreases tremendously.
50%, and I'm sure that that number has increased. So we, we want action. We want, not only action, we want pre-action. We want things to prevent in, instead of a reaction, right?
Right, and, and dope enough, there's a push in New York City to. Right, and, and dope enough, there's a push in New York City to bring the Ashanti Alert to the state of New York. But once there's appropriation and there's some young sisters in New York who are working with Mister Mel Tony Billy, uh, Brandy, um. Ashanti's father, and they're pushing, pushing, pushing. But we're pushing on that national level to get that funded, to take the weight off of them and everyone else on the state level. And, and, and dope enough, we were blessed to even include the Native American reservations and territories. Because the amount of missing persons on the Native American reservations and territories, particularly women, is staggering. And no one keeps a record. But this system will go into service for those communities as well. So I'm very, very, very proud of the work that myself and our team did to push this thing all the way up to Capitol Hill. And then to the desk of the president. We had an awesome team, an all-star cast, and we did it. And we did it for the people, and I'm very pleased.
Awesome. Well, I know we do have an, um, you have an event coming up, right? We have the, the early voting.
Yes, Mona Lisa's.
Kickoff at Mona Lisa's.
Is that September six?
Sixteen.
Sixteen.
Sixteen Thursday, yeah.
Yes, yes. And that is, um, it's a fundraiser and kickoff for the early vote that starts on September seventeenth. Early vote is something new to Virginia, and it, it's coming out of Georgia and other states. And said to be an effort to push back against voter suppression, given more opportunity and space. Even particularly during the pandemic. But it's being manipulated by some forces to push, uh, using city resources and other things. For their candidate. So we're working very hard. Uh, at this point, up until this point, we've been a self-financed campaign. We haven't raised any money. We've had a few contributors that we're notating in our next financial report. But we've been self-financed, uh, up to this point, and we're moving now into the fundraising stages.
Yes, and I can appreciate that as someone who is self-made and someone who is a entrepreneur. So, you know, the steps that you're taking to finance this camp- campaign, and you're really putting in the groundwork. And we have a great team.
Amazing team.
We're a family. We all, we put in the groundwork, and I was so proud of you. I saw you on the news the other day. And um, I know, again, you were discussing the issues and how we can change. And again, the groundwork, putting in, in the work, because I know some of the other candidates. Are endorsed by the city. So um, it's a little bit different when your funding and your groundwork is already stamped. So I can appreciate that we're actually going through the grooves and we're actually putting in and finding out, putting in the work and finding out what needs to be done. It's a little bit different.
You mentioned amazing team. I'm blessed with amazing teams in my personal business, my personal life. And as well as my campaign. And since God has put us together and your mother has adopted me and I have adopted you all and we're family. You know, we, we've done some tremendous work and, 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 and the thing. Yes, we're making noise. And so I'm glad to have such an amazing uh, personal, business, and campaign team. And bringing all of it together gave us an opportunity to see what needed to be done. So when we set up in that community, we came there to be candidates, but we ended up buying the block. Setting the stage for what we're encouraging others to do. We're literally building, and we were contacted by the, um, the local chapter of the Black Wall Street. They want us to engage because of some of the things. So uh, as we're making major purchases, multimillion-dollar purchases in this effort. Uh, and we're thankful and, and blessed to have so many amazing people. Who can think outside of the box so that we can get things done in a lawful and a righteous way. Because God is at the forefront of this campaign, and most people don't see it or don't understand it. But everyone around me is spiritual in their own way. And we move as a spiritual unit to get this work done. And don't misunderstand spiritual for coward because there's a rod and a staff that accompanies us. And God gives us power and strength, and we hope never to have to use it. Because young people are, as they are engaging us, they are very excited about what the promise and the hope of what we're bringing is. And those who push against that are making them very disappointed. And we want to keep our young people in a posture of positivity. Because we know that they can act up when they don't get what they want. And they want Muhammad.
We do, we do. We do. Well, I have one final thing that I, I'm curious to know your thoughts about. We know that Popular Hall has apartments that are being proposed. Um, I'm not sure if the citizens are aware of, or how they were made aware.
Well, you know how, we went to work and made them aware. Don't be modest.
No, no, but I mean prior to that.
Oh, prior to that, they had not been made aware. In fact, the city was acting in a very um, deceitful posture. Voting and, and on the issue absent. If it were not for um, the champion and warrior of our council for the last thirty years, Mister Paul R. Riddick. Who called them out. He had to say to the other members of council, uh, this is a black community. And I can't get one black person up here to stand with me for this community. So when I got the call from the community, we went and we served. We provided um, sprinter buses and, and escort to the residences. Uh, the residents of Popular Halls to go to City Hall and be heard, even though they stifled their voice. But we put pressure on the issue, and so then the developer has come back and conceded some proposals to the community. That I'm hoping they hold out on. Because all of those apartments, while they appear cute, what happens with apartments is, and you're real, you have appreciation for this. They generally attract transient people, meaning people who are only there for a short term. And so they're less likely to engage in the political process, the tax-based process. They're generally there for a term. And so after term, after term, after term, and those units become uh, dilapidated. It's a very expensive undertaking to go in and fix three hundred apartment units. So what happens? They go to a lower rental base. They go to a lower rental base, and then they attract people who are not purposed on community. Like the residential community that they've now intruded upon. So you're mixing a poisonous gas that will eventually suffocate the people. And I'm against it for that reason, but I stand with the people. And those people of that community know best what they will want, and they told me they don't want it. Yeah, I spoke to, I sent my team out to seven hundred and fifty households in Popular Halls. And we got a tremendous response to the City Hall out of that, and the people plainly said they don't want it.
Yeah, and that's it. So I, I, I can appreciate that. And as, as we're growing, uh, as individuals and as people, and our focus changed, you know, when you get older, your, your focus changed. So we wanna focus more on the education, the people, you know, taxes, uh, budgets. Where we can use uh, the money. So I just wanna say I appreciate you. Um, I, I believe in you. Um, I believe that you will win the Ward Seven position. So yeah, so I'm just really grateful that we were able to have this open, honest conversation.
I'm always, always seeking to be honest, and that's one of the problems that gets me in trouble. Thank you.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. So um, anything else that you want to let the people know or address?
No, my heart, my commitment is service. My life has been serviced. I have no reason to change now. My goal is to make as many black millionaires as possible. And people say, you can't say that, you can't say that. My service is to all. But I understand how to change landscape. When you look at Atlanta that we all love so much. It became a better city when black people began to get intrinsic wealth. And that was done through the political landscape led by its former mayor, Menat Jackson, for whom Jackson-Hartsville Airport is named. So we wanna spur economic growth, economic development, and increase black millionaires coming out of this city. That's our goal.
Everyone likes black millionaire.
Ooh, I hope so, there.
You know, everyone does.
Everyone, and they treat you better.
And they treat you better.
They treat you much better.
It's just the truth.
Oh, it, it is, it is. And people give you things. I just never understood why people give rich people things. But people give you things when you have money.
When you have money, it's weird. Yes, well, I appreciate it.
And you know the love is real. Shout out to your husband.
Yes, of course. Thank you, thank you for, for always.
My brother, my brother, and my friend till the end.
Very soon.
Very soon.
Very soon.
Till the end.
Thank you all so much. Um, again, please tune in September seventeenth, early voting. Um, come to our fundraising event September sixteenth at Mona Lisa's, starts at six-thirty. Uh, please, please get registered to vote. You have until, you have now until November second. So please stay engaged until then, and thank you all so much.
Thank you.